Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here with us. It's much appreciated that you are here in person to hear what's going on around District 5 and in Huruba Valley. We've got quite a bit of projects to share, from single-family housing to multifamily housing, mixed-use projects, over 50 acres of retail, trade tech center, educational opportunities, parks, and much more. So I'm excited to be here with you guys to get to share that information with all of you. As Devin Fisher said, we'll hold questions until the end, and then we'll probably finally have a roundtable with all the different departments. So please stick around after that. So with that, I will present our first presenter, which is a presentation from this very site, Flabob Airport, and I'm pleased to announce Chief Financial Officer and Director of Youth Programs, Nina Brethel.
Thank you. I'm Nina. I'm here with Flabob Airport. I work for the Tom Wathen Center. We took over the airport back in 2000. Tom Wathen's mission here is to reach kids through aviation. So we do a lot of kid programs here that starts out from field trips going from elementary school. We have a junior high high school here on campus. We also have a college. So our sole mission here is just bringing kids into aviation. And I'd just like to say, welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
The next one we will go on to, and I do want to provide a little note about Flabob. We just recently, in cooperation with the Flabob Airport, approved the Flabob Airport-specific plan. So for those that don't know what that means, is before that, this actually was not really zoned to be an airport. It was zoned for other uses, which allows for some exposure. So with partnership with Flabob, we worked on potential future uses, obviously the use of an actual airport, and now it is zoned that way to protect it forever. With that, I want to introduce our next presenter. For updates from the Community Development Department, it is my pleasure to introduce Community Development Director, Joe Perez.
Thank you. I got an applause. That's outstanding. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's always my pleasure to discuss some of the new projects that are coming online in the city of Huruba Valley. As the mayor indicated, we really have a wide variety of new projects coming into town that are all the way through the process of under-review and even under-construction and just wrapping up. So it's a very, very dynamic time that we're in in the history of Huruba Valley because there is so much development activity and continued interest in the city. Everything from residential to commercial, as indicated by the mayor. Again, it's really a real pleasure for me to walk you through some of the new projects that are coming forward. So the first one I'd like to talk about is the former Kmart site. This is in the DeAnza Plaza Shopping Center off of Limoneite. This is a center, as we all are aware, that has really kind of gone through its paces and really needs a new shot in the arm and revitalization. And that's exactly what we're seeing right now. We're seeing harbor freight and sprouts coming into the site. So if you've driven by there recently, you'll see sort of a chain link fence up. And they're doing tenant improvements right now. And so it's going to be not only sprouts and harbor freight, but they're also looking for other tenants to go in there, as well as a pad building up front. So again, we're very excited to see new retail opportunities and new continued energy actually going into that center. The next one I'd like to talk about is the shops at Huruba Valley. This is on the northeast corner of Mission and Pyrite. And this is about a 32-acre site. It's currently vacant. If you go over there right now, there's all sorts of earth-moving equipment, grading equipment, that's on the site. And they're really getting ready for this regional shopping center. It will include, and sort of as the centerpiece of the project, a new Target that's going to go on sort of the eastern edge of that. That's going to be a part of the second phase of the development. But it's going to include different shopping opportunities, Burlington Coat Factory, Ross Dress for Less. It'll have Aldi, so a new grocery store. We all know, I think we can all agree, that we're all ready for some new grocery stores in this city. I think there's like 832 Stater Brothers in the city, and they're all pretty tired and old. So we're looking for some new energy and opportunities, at least some variety, right? So this certainly brings that, as far as Aldis. There's also some great eateries coming in. I mean, who doesn't love In-N-Out Burgers, right? So double-level cheese, grilled onions. Do we have any grilled onions people here? Yeah, there's like half a room here, so that's outstanding. And Chipotle and some others. So again, this is underway. This is a reality. It's currently being graded and going to be under construction soon. What we see here is the top slide is really the focal point of the development. It's located right in the corner of Pyrite and Mission. And it'll be a nice outdoor eating area, so there'll be some shaded trellises, some water features, some outdoor furniture. Just a nice gathering place. And then the bottom is, that you see there on the slide, is a rendering of what the new Target will look like. And again, it's about, you know, what we hear consistently from the community is, "We, Huruba Valley residents, we want shopping opportunities in the city." "We don't want to have to drive to Eastvale," or I shouldn't even name these people, you know, "other cities," right? "We want, not only for convenience sake, but also it keeps our sales tax dollars in the city," right? So that's super important. And these are significant sales tax generators that can allow us to put money back into the city streets, police services, and other essential services that we provide. So Van Buren Marketplace. This is right in the heart of the city. It's off of Van Buren and Route Hile. And this is about a 16-acre site. Again, this is just a great time to be talking about this because if you drive along Van Buren, you will see, just if you peek over the fencing there that's all screened, more earth-moving equipment. So they are currently grading. We're looking at a pretty significant shopping center that's going to go there. The anchor is going to be a new Viarta Shopping Market. And if any of you have seen the newer versions of these, they are very, very nice. They're really impressive. Again, another great shopping opportunity. And there's some other pad buildings and other suites that are going to be occupied there. They're currently in the process of actually engaging and getting leases for those. But we're really excited about this project. Mission Village. So this is sort of up in the northeastern portion of the city, off of Mission and Stobbs Way. This would be on the southeast corner. It's about a 90-acre site. It's vacant. I think all of us drive through along there and go, "Something needs to go there." It's been vacant for a long time. And we're happy to say that there's a developer that's ready to engage, and we're getting very close to approving this project. This would include a grocery outlet, a Dollar Tree, a Planet Fitness. We also understand there's a Hava restaurant. Love those hamburgers, so they'll be coming. And a new Starbucks. I know people are, some people love Starbucks because somebody's saying, "Don't we have enough Starbucks?" But Starbucks has come, so it's going to be another good outlet for that. And then another property along Mission, kind of in that same area, and this is what we call Mission Plaza. This is on the southeast corner of Mission and Riverview Drive. Again, it's a pretty large area. It's 14 acres of undeveloped area. We've been working with the property owner, again, to bring in possibly a new grocery store. In this case, it would most likely be Cardenas Grocery Store and some other retail opportunities. So that's currently under discussion right now. But it's certainly a site that needs to be engaged. It needs to really, something needs to happen there because when we do that, again, we not only create opportunities for shopping, sales tax revenue, but also eliminates plight, which essentially this property is. And then another one I'd like to mention, it's a very interesting project. This is called the Rubido Gateway. So this is on the far eastern edge of the city, right along Mission and the Santa Ana River at Crestmore. And it's about a 7-acre site that's currently vacant. And it is, this is an entitled-approved project. It would include about 57 affordable apartment units, along with a commercial component. So you have this nice residential opportunity with a community center, some outdoor space, along with, again, opportunity for new retail and services for that part of the community. And then Panda Express. So Panda Express actually has a drive-through concept. And we're going to be seeing this. It's at a very active intersection at Mission and Valley Way. So there's a lot going on over there right now. But they are currently getting ready to get building permits for this new Panda Express, so you'll be able to dine in and also drive through. And this would also include a couple of different pad buildings, so most likely other drive-through opportunities. And then this was terrific. This is Tractor Supply. So this is around Sierra and Armstrong. So this is on sort of the southwest corner of the property. It's about a 5-acre site. Again, another undeveloped vacant site, but Tractor Supply is getting ready to break ground on this. And, you know, I always thought Tractor Supply, they sell tractors, just so you know, they don't sell tractors. I was really disappointed to hear that. That's devastating. But anyway, but they sell a lot of other great stuff. And it is going to serve really this whole existing residential area, the community around there, as well as the new Shadow Rock community that's currently under development. And when you look at a map of the city, that's an area that really is missing some retail opportunities. So we think that this is going to provide some really great opportunities and just purchasing opportunities for the residents in the area. The mayor mentioned we have a lot of different residential projects going on in town. One I'd like to mention is Saddlehorn Ranch. So this is located off of Riverview Drive, kind of south of the Limoneite Frontage Road. And what's going there are about 31 new single-family detached homes. The lots are going to range anywhere from 20,000 square feet to about 57,000 square feet. So again, it just shows you that, and we have, we've got a number of these coming into the city, so really high-quality residential projects at every level. So this is an example of a pretty large, single-family detached site. And so we've got everything from like a 25-unit project to the one I'm about to talk about here. So this is called the Rio Vista Specific Plan Area. This area is located up in the northeastern portion of the city, north of the 60 Freeway, sort of in the, off the Rubido area. And it's very large. It's 917 acres area. And there's currently what's called a specific plan. It's just a fancy planning term for, it's an entitled area with different planning areas. And the existing plan calls out mainly for residential. Well, the developers come in and made a proposal for a new specific plan that would include about the same number of units. We're talking about 16, approximately 1,600 residential units. So we're large. So again, I grew up from 25 units, and now we've got a 1,600-unit project. And so we're currently going through a new specific plan development process. And one of the main features that differentiates this specific plan from the existing is includes about the same number of units, but we're adding the opportunity for some business park and maybe light industrial in there. And it's a very challenging site because there are no utilities that, you know, for residential, you need sewer, you need water, you need electric, you need all these things. You need financing to get the money in. So the business park aspect of that would make this possible. And what really is exciting about this is this next slide and how it's connected to the Rio Vista site. So the mayor mentioned this proposed conceptual inland empire technical trade center. So we are working in partnership with Riverside Community College District. There's already been significant funding from the state for planning and things like, you know, potential acquisition that would allow for a new trade center to actually go within the new Rio Vista Specific Plan Area. This is a highly coveted opportunity. Many, many cities would love to have this. This would be a true crown jewel for us and the community if this were able to come. And so we're in very, very serious talks with the Community College District. We're working with the state, as well as the developer, to make sure that if this specific plan is ultimately approved, that it would allow for this type of facility to come into the city. And then another large development that we are currently analyzing and will be bringing to public hearing in the next few months is something called the District of Huruba Valley. This is a 250-acre area, so you could basically fit three Disneyland's in this area, just to give you an idea of how large this area is. It's south of the 60 Freeway, just along the Santa Ana River. And the bottom photo there is from Hall Street looking in the southwest direction. So there is an existing, what we call a specific plan on that property. It was called the Emerald Meadows, am I right on that? I'm just wrong. Specific plan, and now we're looking at renaming it, calling it the District of Huruba Valley. What is being proposed, again, this hasn't been approved yet. This will go to Planning Commission, go to the City Council, there'll be public hearings. But it's a mixed-use project, so it will include about 1,100, 1,200 residential. It will include, and what's being proposed is an industrial warehouse component, along with open space, hospitality, in other words, hotels, and a regional retailer as well. So again, this is a significant project. This is an area that's currently been, if you go out there, it's currently vacant. But again, it provides for potential opportunity for not only housing, but open space and retail in the area as well. So that concludes my report, and I will be in the back table over there. If you have any questions regarding any of these projects, or if you'd like to talk about, "Hey, I'm driving down over here. What's happening on this project?", feel free to connect with me back here, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. And I do want to highlight, out of the shops at Huruba Valley, there was one update that is new. It's a Raising Canes. So for those that have been asking for Chick-fil-A, sorry. There's a few other sites that we might get one, but Raising Canes won out on this one. And for those that are here or watching, I just want to really refresh everyone's memory or at least understanding that we did not pick the tenants. The city just has no say in who the tenants are. It is a mixture of key performance indicators, KPIs, traffic, median income, population density, et cetera, et cetera. So they look at what will be profitable, and those companies do their own analysis. And they're the ones that decide if they can pay the lease rate and will the demographics in the area be able to create an ROI for them that they can survive in that shopping center. So that's why we have, unfortunately, like five or six Starbucks coming. Well, I would love a Coffee Bean. Coffee Bean and our Dust Brothers does not create the traffic that Starbucks does. So the shopping centers want Starbucks in there because they bring people in, and that's what attracts other tenants to these centers. Again, I would love a Coffee Bean. And I keep trying to get variety, but like you saw the Viarta Shopping Center, you saw the Tractor Supply, you saw the Mission Plaza, those are going to have coffee shops in them. You can guess with your green logo. And the lines continue to be long? That's the argument, right? Everyone's like, "Well, we have enough Starbucks. Well, if we did, there wouldn't be lines." And that's the argument. But however, again, you don't get to decide. We do advocate on their behalf. We hear you. I'm crossing my fingers, maybe one of them has something different. I think there might be two projects we might get something different. I also want to talk about the housing, right? So we talked about the Saddlehorn Ranch, 31 half-acre properties. I want to really highlight the spectrum that we have. So we have that project, and then you saw the Rio Vista and the district. Those are going to go all the way to multifamily on the Rio Vista Specific Plan, part of where the education office is supposed to go. And so you guys know, it's a trade tech center as currently proposed. And the idea that I've been working directly with the transfer at RCC is a potential future expansion to a full college. And right next to it, if you see the proposed plan, is the highest density housing. And the idea is to get student housing. So that's the, and that's kind of, these are being planned out. Always open to more comments and feedback, always. But you can see, we're listening to things, we're trying to plan things where people can, you know, work and play. So some of these projects are that way. Some of these projects are single-family. And we're trying to propose, trying to provide our residents a wide breadth of affordability levels because everyone wants something different, and we definitely don't want to create a continuous level of suburbia. So there are projects, and there's everything in the middle. What else? I think I had, I think that's all for the projects. Again, at the end, I'm more than happy to talk to you about other projects and the affordability, our inclusionary housing ordinance. That's really important on how we're trying to fit, on how we're trying to increase the affordability levels. And in general, besides the inclusionary housing ordinance, it's all really capitalism, right? It's supply and demand. So as long as the demand is above supply, which right now, if you see Shadow Rock or Paradise Knowles or the Renola Apartments, they're being rented out or bought before they're even built. So that tells you that demand is above supply. So when does that happen in the regular market? I think price goes up. So we're trying to create the supply to reduce demand pricing. And in addition, which I've shared many times and want to have you talk to you guys about, is the state mandates on housing. So we have to balance that as well, at the same time trying to plan a city that works because their mandates don't provide for extra funding for infrastructure. They just say, "Go build a house." You have to zone, remember, the city doesn't build, go zone for the additional housing. Figure out the infrastructure for yourself. Wonderful for them. So with that, I will go on to another favorite thing that I really want to show you guys is update from our Public Works Engineering Department. It is my pleasure to introduce Assistant City Engineer, Octavio Duran.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I usually don't get a podded. I usually get calls to fix potholes. So tonight, I'm going to share an update on some of the projects that we have coming up that will fix some of the pothole problems. So first slide here, pavement rehab. So it's no secret, you drive around the city, a lot of our roads are in need of repair. You don't need to be a rocket scientist to really know that, but there is actually a metric out there that grades the condition of pavement. So they're rated on a scale of 0 to 100. And our condition in the city is in the 50s, low 50s, which is considered at-risk, borderline poor. Good news is we have a lot of projects planned over the next couple of years thanks to a few funding sources and a new funding source that became available through, so it's called ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. Nickname is COVID relief money. We'll be putting that into action in the next, really starting this summer. But over the next couple of years, we'll be really active fixing our roads. So here's a map of Council District 5. You know, you can recognize all these streets, but I actually have them listed on the next slide. First on the list, we have Crestmore Road. So we'll be paving that street from Mission to 46. So this is right along, right behind us, right along the sports park. We'll also be including Green Strive. Actually pictured on the slide is Green Strive. I don't think the picture does it justice. If you go out there, it's in more shape. But everything around it has been recently maintained, usually just, you know, neighborhood streets. Depending on the condition, you'll do a preventative maintenance treatment. This is far beyond sealing the street, so you have to do some major rehab. That's on the list for this summer. We also have Huruba Road, really extending the limits from the portion that we just paved. So we'll be finishing up Huruba Road from Colina Street to Mission Boulevard. And last on the list for Council District 5, I guess for this upcoming project, is Valley Way. So Huruba Road turns into Valley Way, so we'll be really extending that segment. And then in the future year, we'd be finishing off Valley Way as it becomes the Armstrong up to the city limit. I just don't have it listed here. So when we're paving our streets, we really take into, I guess, consideration the existing striping that you have out there. We try to improve. So obviously, you have the benefit of fixing the street, but really you're taking advantage of a blank canvas. You can put in new designs, new striping, new signage to really improve the safety of the street. So I'll be going over a few traffic calming projects that we have coming up, traffic calming and safety projects. So I talked about Crestmore. Crestmore obviously is in need of, you know, resurfacing. But if you ever catch yourself driving on Crestmore, you might pick up some speed. We're really planning on doing something about that. So the concept here, and actually, I don't think the picture shows it, but if you go out there, you see some skid marks and people doing donuts, unfortunately. So we'll be putting in some striping and some ballards, other features, to try to prevent that and reduce some speeding. But the concept here is currently part of Crestmore has four lanes, two lanes in each direction. So we will be reducing it from four lanes to two lanes. So one lane in each direction, including bike lanes with buffer for protection and the, or not raised, painted median. Really have a lot of space on this street, so there's opportunity to really, you know, put in some improvements that'll help. We're also considering implementing some traffic circles at two locations along that stretch. And I'll show an example on the next slide. So the next traffic calming project that we have planned is Skyview Road. This street's not being paved beforehand. This is a striping-only project. But over the years, we've received a lot of calls and emails about speeding on this street. So this is one of the first locations where we're trying some of these things out. Again, it's paint. We'll be putting in some delineators. It's really put out there in that as a pilot. You evaluate it. If it works, you can look at something more permanent. But if it doesn't work, you can always remove it. So that's the beauty of it. The Skyview project is from John Drive to Ave Juan Batista. So this is a traffic circle we just installed a few weeks ago on Aggett Street. As you can see, it's painted ballards. It really helps reduce speeding on some of these streets. So again, as we're putting stuff out, we'll be evaluating and, you know, making changes as needed. And this is located, Aggett Street, south of Mission, the segment was Mission to Huruba Road. I'm sorry, Colina Street. The last project I have on this list for traffic calming safety is the Sydene-Gobbie and Pet Bike Project. This project is grant-funded and provides sidewalks from Mission to 42nd Street. Really, it's a Safe Rocks to School project. This is next to Rubido High School. Missing sidewalk, there's sidewalk gaps along the stretch. Some portions don't have any sidewalk at all. So obviously, this will improve safety for children, parents walking to school. And other enhancements as part of this project are bull belts to really reduce the distance that children have to cross and flashing beacons. And again, this is a grant-funded project. We actually have a grant application that we're working on to complete sidewalk gap south of this. So once the project's complete, we'll have sidewalk from 42nd to Mission, even north of that piece. The grant would really seek funding to complete the rest, or I guess the final stretch to Pacific from 42nd to Limoneite. And then the, just another project I wanted to highlight. You know, we have a really nice path along Limoneite. Unfortunately, if you walk out there at night, there's no streetlights or there's no lighting. Part of that, or actually all that is due to some stolen copper wire. So we have a project planned to not just install the wire, but install some new fixtures. We have, we'll be going to council to, you know, seek funding for the project. But obviously, as part of that project, we'd be looking at different types of fixtures that are less prone to being stolen, right? And then also more energy-efficient. And last but not least, you know, I focused on our capital projects, but I do want to highlight that our Public Works crews are out there working hard. And I really want to promote the use of our, my Huruba Valley app. We count on residents and everyone out there, you're our eyes and ears. And, you know, if you're able to download the app, put in your request, someone will be on it. And, you know, the workload is heavy. What keeps the crews most busy are illegal dumping and potholes, but they're on top of it. And, you know, within 48 hours, you'll get a response. And, you know, this is really, you know, thanks to the crews and thanks to the people that are reporting it. This isn't the only way to report stuff. You can always call, email, but this is definitely the best way to get ahold of someone. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Got some good information for roads in our area. Now, I do want to touch on, I'll talk about funding, right? We know what the state of our roads are in, and we, at various public council meetings, we've talked about to fix all our roads to at least a B-ish grade, we need about $120 million. Don't have $120 million. Don't have $120 million. Alright, so through the American Rescue Plan Act, COVID money, ARPA, we are investing 20 million of the 29 million we got into our roads. So it's going to be, it's going to be a big dent, but nowhere near what we need. Right, and people ask, well, why don't you fix this road or that road? We would love to fix all the roads if we had the money. Part of what we're doing, and part of what our community director, Joe Perez, talks about is all the retail. Cities are funded through sales tax. For property taxes, we get 6% of your base property tax. So let's say that you pay, because a lot of the more established neighborhoods, maybe I'm ours paid $2,000 in property taxes. $120 of that goes to the city for police, fire, public works, engineering, code enforcement, all that stuff. I've shared, and later on I can share with you who gets the other big pieces. It's mostly the county, and rightfully so, the school district. And then everyone else gets a little piece of the pie. So cities really rely on sales tax. So we need to generate more sales tax, bring more retail, have more retail, more people, have more people, more housing. It's all tied together. And I'll make sure to figure on that. And I didn't want to talk about the Safe Rocks to Schools, I think that we have five, I think four projects or five, but there are other ones like Sunny Slope, Granite Hill, Mariloma, those are all going to get sidewalks out through grant funding. So that's perfect, I know our staff is working, working hard on finding other revenue sources to bring the things that our residents deserve. Again, if we had all the money in the world, we would be fixing everything tomorrow, but then I'd also have people that don't like that, that were fixing everything at the same time. So I'll give you, and I also want to explain the cost of things too. You saw Green's Drive, it's a residential road. To fix that, it's about half a million dollars. Yes, I know, right? It's really expensive. To give you perspective, the most favorite thing that everyone loves is the gas tax, right? SB1. Everyone loves it, I know, I know. So from SB1 to gas tax, City Peruca Valley gets $2 million every year from that. Just, yeah, it sounds big. So let's say we fix one mile of Van Buren, the two lanes each way, that's $2 million, it's gone. So by the way, the next part of Van Buren is from Belgrave to Ediwanda, that's some land, that land is going to go over there. So in case, right now we all avoid the right lane, right? So we, again, we understand, and we're trying to fix everything we can with the funds that we have. And to show another big project that's going to come along is Van Buren from Limone to the bridge. We're going to widen that to three lanes. That's the way you can fund it. I know, right? And then the bridge is finally going to be painted the way it was always intended for three lanes. But yeah, we're doing everything we can with the money we have and stretching it as far as we can. I'm very excited about Crestmore, I have people that live in Lauren Ranch, I hear it all the time, feeders, people doing donuts, you can go down there right now at every little intersection, there's the donuts. So people are going to be excited about that, I'm excited about Green's Drive, I'm excited about Peruca Road, all these projects. And this is not to say that these are the only streets that are going to be repaired in District Five over the next three or five years, there will also be projects that you've seen, Director Murphy, the Sturdy Seals, you'll still see that in the residential areas. Again, a Sturdy Seal is basically a cap to prolong the life of that road. So those will still happen, but these are the major investments, alright? So with that, I will go on to the next presenter, and updates from the Peruca Unified School District, and I'd like to introduce Assistant Superintendent of Pupil Services, Rosa Santos D.
Thank you, Mayor Barajas. But it's a pleasure to be here. I'm going to spend some time talking about the many ways that Peruca Unified is working toward building more community partnerships here in Peruca and outside through our Community Schools Program partnership. Alright, so before we start, we start with the vision, our focus areas. Under Dr. Hanson's leadership, we have developed five vision, our focus areas. I lead pupil services, and he worked primarily under the systems of support. And the work that we're doing with the Community Schools Program really fits in nicely with that, because it's all about providing those supports for the whole child. Community schools, so we received $9.2 million over five years with the California Department of Education. We applied last year about this time, and we're proud that we are the only district in the county that receives funding for community schools. We are targeting the five, six schools listed above there, five being your area, Mayor Barajas, and Tross Street being Mr. Cormona's area. We purposely chose those as a feeder pattern, all except for Tross Street. One of the requirements for the grant was that you had to have a clinic there, and Tross Street at that time had a working clinic. Right now with construction, we're in flux with that, but that's coming soon. Another requirement of the grant was that we had to provide a community schools teacher or what they refer to as a community schools coordinator for each one of those sites. So what is a community school? The official definition above there is from the Coalition for Community Schools, but in a nutshell, it basically is building partnerships so we can provide integrated supports for students. And this was a big push from the governor, and continues to be. This cycle of community schools is what we'll be going through for the next five years. Really, it starts with a needs assessment. We need to find out what is it that the school sites need, and they're all unique in their needs. So those sites use previous surveys that they had in place, as well as current needs assessments to the educational partners, so all parents, staff, as well as students, to find out what those needs were. I can tell you that the top need right now out of all six is mental health supports, as well as we have students that are coming to school on hungry, so we're looking at that as well. With that feedback, we set priorities. The Community Schools TSA works with the principal and the staff to prioritize what those needs are and start looking for those supports. Many of those we already had built in. This community schools partnership, this program falls underneath PICO, Parent Involvement Committee Outreach, under Director Jose Campos, and his Community Schools Coordinator, Monica Leon. So we have many of those partnerships already established. After a needs assessment, we kind of take a look at what is it that they need and start looking for more of those, and really providing that whole child approach is about getting kids ready to be successful for the future, so they can learn without limits, which is our motto in Peruca. The community school pillars you see above, that really is the framework that the California Department of Education provides, and that we work within those four boxes when we implement community schools. Number one, integrating those supports, and then also looking at family engagement. Those two were the top two areas that we focused on this first year. We received funding, and then we didn't hire TSA's until the end of September, so we didn't get this ball rolling until probably mid-October. And I'm really proud of the work that really in a short amount of time, they've been able to do at the school sites. The expanded and enriched learning opportunities, we're always looking for ways that before school, after school, how we can provide math nights, family nights, and we'll see a little bit of that highlighted in the next slides I'll show you. The last piece is a big piece, the collaborative piece. We have collaborated with our union, both are certificated, NEHA and CSCA, all along the way to get this going. The sites that are involved with community schools also have to have a community schools council, where they need to talk about the needs assessments and the next steps that they have to do. So let me walk you through each of the sites and just highlight a few of the many things that they're doing there. So at Ina Arbuckle, they're having science nights. This is one way to expand learning opportunities, bring parents in, and also look at those next generation science standards, and do some hands-on activities. Dino School came as a direct ask of the staff there. When the school year started, our kindergarten students needed some help with redirection. So you see pictured there, Dr. Gadsden, who is the Community Schools TSA, she provides lessons on positive behaviors. Those go home to parents, and they practice there, and the students come back to school and practice them some more. No idea why I did that, I'm going to keep talking through it. At Rustic Lane, they had cultural science and art lessons, so another way to expand those learning opportunities for students. They also had family picnics. So the first picture that we had, the opening picture, was Villa de los Muertos, and that was one of the very first events that they had at Rustic Lane to bring parents back. With the pandemic, and I mean by that, with the pandemic, we didn't have, of course, parents visiting campuses. Once we opened up that first year, it was still slow going. So we're really working at bringing parents back to the campuses, and this is one way we did that, through those family picnics. Tross Street Elementary, I'm really proud of this, watchdogs. So this program was at Peruca Middle School several years ago, and we're happy that it's back. And this dad's agreed students is really all about highlighting those male role models on campus. They are there to welcome the kids as they come in. I happened to be there one day, where the student was explaining how excited he was that his dad was going to be there. We are expanding this to other sites as well. English classes, that was another activity or support that parents wanted and that came out of the needs assessment. We provide the use of Rosetta Stone and give them our Chromebooks to use and borrow so they can do lessons. At West Riverside, we have strengthening families. Those are lessons that both parent and child take together separately, and then they come back and they discuss, so it could be mental health, social, emotional lessons, and at the end they receive a basket with games and books, highlighting all the new things that they just learned in those classes. Parent literacy is a big one, and we are very proud to be able to offer parents the education, further education, how they can help their child by learning reading routines. So they support the classroom teacher, go home, pardon me, to practice that, and then also receive books to use. Mission Middle School, they are implementing lunch group wellness activities, and that was a direct ask from the students. They wanted a place where they can be safe, and depending on what those activities are, some of those are peer-led, some of those are led by the Community Schools TSA, Chelsea Black. And we're really excited about this next one. Next year, they'll be launching a wellness center, and that really is modeled after the wellness center at Rubito High School. We really are looking at that to be the model wellness center. We visited many wellness centers in different areas, that I won't mention the names, because somebody already mentioned the names of those areas, and we won't, but we are going to have, and I'm going to say it, we're going to have one of the best wellness centers, if not the best, that's what we're striving for, and we really want that for our community. It provides mental and behavioral and health support, we house social work in there, a mental health therapist there, we have a food pantry and enclosed pantry there for our students to use, as well as a space for students during lunchtime, we just started opening up at lunch, where they just need to, you know, relax, rest, when they need a time out, they can regulate themselves and use that room. What we are noticing is that the teachers are going in there to use it as well. They need help with their social, emotional wellness too, right? So they go in there, and I think it's great modeling for the kids to see that, hey, my teachers are in here too as well. So we're very excited about that. They connect with the feeder schools, so I think this has probably been the biggest advantage of having the community schools in this feeder pattern. The students from Rubito High School will go out to the different elementary sites and have talks on what to expect when you get to high school. This is what it looks like. We brought out the Rubito High School Ballet Faborico, they've done different dances there at the different sites. As you can see, there's a painting activity, they did a beautification activity there that they did at one of the sites. So we're really proud of not just the expanding and the integrating of supports that that's doing, but really growing the leadership too there at Rubito High School. So how do we grow the community? I should say partnerships there, sorry, I think when they put it on the PDF, sometimes it's that. So I'm not going to read all of these to you, but I will point out that mental health, as I stated before, is a huge area of need. So we look everywhere, and I give all the kudos to our Director Jose Campos, because those of you that don't know him, very well connected in this community, and reaching out, not just to obtain grants, but reaching out to always find ways to provide mental health support to our students. Community health systems that we're working with, we are going to have behavioral health clinics at those wellness centers in the future, so we're excited about that. We've partnered with Neighborhood Health to bring us dental vans. Riverside Community Health Systems to bring Zumba classes to some of the school sites. Riverside University Health Systems provided us with a mini grant at Rubito High School. They actually took that money and they created videos on suicide prevention and mental health, and they have submitted those videos, and they're waiting to see if they're in the running for a prize for that. Abierto Puertas gives us parent engagement, parent education classes. Friday Night Live is going to bring focus groups onto the campuses. Operation Safe House is what I like to refer to as an oldie but a goodie. We had Operation Safe House years and years ago, and we had to stop because we did not have the hands on deck to be able to coordinate that. How the community schools now allows us the opportunity to have someone that coordinates those integrated services onto those campuses. So this will start, they'll bring in this service at Rubito High School. Sigma Beta Zai is providing grants and support for African-American youth here in Peruca, and then Vision y Componiso is also providing parent education. So these are just a few of those partnerships that we're trying to grow in the community. I can tell you, just by the presentations I saw before from all the different vendors that are coming in and stores, those are places for us to be able to connect as well as we continue to grow these community schools. This is just the first cohort. We have just applied for a second round of schools, and we're hoping to hear very soon we're going to be funded for that, so we're really excited about that. And with that, I thank you for providing me the time to speak about Peruca Unified, and we're really excited about what's to come in the future. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Santos D. And to touch a little bit on schools, so a lot of, I get a lot of questions about the new housing, and they're like, what about the schools, they're overcrowded, et cetera. I do want to share that every project, whether commercial or residential, every agency reviews, and they look at capacity, they look at those types of things, and then they have to give us a go-ahead to move forward with it or not. So I will share that there's two projects currently right now, again, proposed, you saw one already, the Real Vista Project, and then one on the other side of town, the Renola Ranch Project. Those two sites have potential or planned school sites in those, and at the time, at which time that it comes before the council, and assuming they are approved, JUSD would have an option of taking those sites and building new schools. And again, they would do their own analysis on what the needs are. You saw, like, Real Vista is almost 16, 1700 units. What are the chances of them actually taking that site? Probably good, but they don't know until it's actually approved and entitled and seeing what's actually going to be built there and what the population's going to be. So please know that every community, every residential project is reviewed by all the different agencies before, so it's not like we're not, we understand the schools, and JUSD does a great job of knowing their business, and they do well at what they do. So with that, uh-oh. Take the agenda. Sorry, Santos D. Yes. So with that, our next presentation will be updates from Cal Fire Riverside County Fire Department, Deputy Chief William Otterman.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Like you said, my name's William Otterman, I'm actually Division Chief for the Northwest Division here. I'm actually the Fire Chief for Peruca Valley and Rubito, so I kind of take care of all those responsibilities. Behind me here, I have one of our Battalion Chiefs, Chris Tate, over there on the right. He sees the day-to-day operations of the department, and we have our Engine 38 crew in the back there as well. Guys, thanks for coming out here. So as you guys have been hearing all this, the community is growing, okay? And with that, you know, our fire department needs to grow as well. So let me give you a little bit of the background of what we do. We have four fire stations within this area, and this Fire Station 38, they run anywhere from 12 to 15 calls a day. That is a lot, that tells you how many calls are running and the need for expansion for our fire department and public safety, so we can keep you guys safe. So we have four stations in this area. We have our Rubito Station and Station 38, right over here on Mission Boulevard. Go west on Mission, you have our West Riverside Station, which is a state-funded station, so they're there doing the state mission, but they're also running calls here in the city of Peruca Valley. There's also Engine 18 out of that in the winter time, and they kind of downgrade to a squad once that other station comes. So we have two pieces of equipment out of there. In Glen Avon, Station 17, we have a truck company out of there and an engine. So they're really busy, that's a really busy station as well. And our Pedley Station right here on Limone, Station 16. So those are our four stations that are running calls in this area. So those are our four stations that are running calls in this area constantly, busy, busy, busy. Besides our engines, we also have our command center, which are, they take the calls, they prioritize the calls, and they get the proper engine or piece of equipment out to you for the service that's provided for you guys. We also have a fire prevention program that they do fire investigations. If there's arson cases, they come out and investigate those. They also do educational programs to inform people what to do around their properties. If you have brush or grass is growing around, they tell you how to clear all that out, make your home safe. And last but not least, we have our Fire Marshal's Office, which they're out here doing inspections on all your local businesses and schools and things like that. They're doing plans events for all the different events we have in the city. Any new construction, they're out there making sure all of our facilities are fire safe. So, and we also have a wildland protection agreement here within the city. We have a lot of the hills behind us, the Rupa Hills. The river bottom is all protected by Cal Fire. So if the city has like an insurance policy basically, and you guys have seen, every summer we get fires. Unfortunately, we have transits that will start fires out there, but you're going to get a full state response with aircraft and everything. So you guys are in good hands with that. So we will send everything we have to put those fires out. So we're talking about growth in the city. So some of these projects that they've been talking about, the district, Rio Vista and Vanilla Ranch, those communities, you know, we're going to get more people hopefully in the future as our plan is to expand with that and put maybe another squad at Station Thirty-Eight, a new station out on Etawanda over by, I think it's what, Belgrave, and get new stations out there. So that's where we're headed as a fire department. We're excited to be here. We've been here since nineteen forty-six, providing fire service for this area. And when the city, Rupa Valley became a city in two thousand and eleven, we continue to be the fire department here. And we look forward to expanding and becoming your fire department for the future and beyond. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Division Chief Otterman. I do, I do want to call out too is you mentioned those projects, again, they're all proposed projects, but those proposed projects would potentially carry a new CFD, Community Facilities District. So they would help fund these new apparatuses, new staffing, new potential fire station on the west end. So these projects would have multiple community benefits if approved. So I wanted to make sure that these projects are a big part of potential funding for these extra services that we daily need. So with that, I'll go on to the next presenter, updates from Riverside County Sheriff's Department Lieutenant Sean Bickers.
Good evening. I'm Sean Bickers. I'm a lieutenant over there at Rupa Valley Sheriff's Station. If I would have known that Chief Otterman was bringing backup with him, I would have had a few more of my guys show up with me, but he's definitely outnumbered me right now. I just want to provide some information in case any of you have seen any of the new cameras with solar panels up throughout the city, just to give you some information about what they are. Basically, what it is, it's an automated license plate reader system. And it is a company that's referred to as, what we refer to as Flock. And it is a huge investigative tool that we were able to get in conjunction with the city to get them posted up in certain locations throughout the city. So I can already see some looks of concern. So let me just set your mind. So right now, we have approximately nineteen cameras up in the city. Within a thirty-day period, it ran about five point one billion plates going through the city. And that information is accessible to us to help us research and catch criminals that are causing the problems throughout your community, okay? And what I want to make sure that you all understand is that there is no facial recognition system built into the program. It's not taking pictures of anybody that's inside the car. It's just taking pictures of the license plates. And the system is also designed in a manner, and this is part of the reason why we support this particular system, unlike, say, the vigilance system that is in some other cities. It only holds the data for thirty days. So it's something to basically let people understand that we're not here trying to see who's driving the car. We're not here trying to be Big Brother watching things. We're really just trying to utilize technology to help stop some of the crimes that are being committed. And so just to give you an idea, so we've had it for approximately two months now. And in doing my research, we've already recovered about five or six stolen vehicles in the city. Some of the information that we've recovered from these vehicles has helped solve a homicide which occurred in our city. We have also helped, there's been a serial robbery kind of thing going on with cell phone stores, and it affected approximately twenty-two robberies affecting about six different agencies throughout San Bernardino, Orange County, and Riverside Counties. And with the utilization of this technology, we've been able to arrest all the individuals involved, put them all in jail, hopefully for a significant period of time to, you know, provide the safer communities that we have. And along with that too, one of the most recent ones I saw was a domestic violence victim, and we were able to utilize the cameras to locate the suspect, find them, and then arrest him. So just wanted to kind of give you an update on that. It's, again, it's a tool that we're utilizing in order to help solve a lot of these crimes that are occurring. And just in the short period of time that we've had it here, it's been tremendous and a huge tool for us in solving a lot of these cases. I mean, to give you an, so my special enforcement team that works for me directly and helps deal with, you know, the working with Path of Life to provide services to the homeless people, helping them get housed, and then they also will help with these types of things. They're currently, right now, as I drove out, they had guys in their car utilizing the Flock system, and that's how they were able to get it on another robbery case that had occurred. So anyway, I'll be hanging out, so if you guys have any questions about the automated license plate reader system, I'll be more than happy to answer anything that you guys have or any other questions that you have to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Bickers. And I do want to share too is the nineteen locations that are throughout the city, it's not just isolated to Rupa Valley. The cities of Marco and a few other cities have them, and other cities are starting to get them. And even ones that have a different system, we're working on integrating them as well. So we can follow potential criminal from city to city and catch them faster than we have before. A good example, and you know, your Ring cameras or all the different variations of those, if you're willing to, you can make them available to our sheriff's department. For instance, in my neighborhood, just recently, there was a catalytic converter that will run, and they can use that, if they can get the license plate of that vehicle, then they can go to the Flock system and find where that vehicle that was taking all the catalytic converters went. But it's much, it's a tool again, right? But we can get them faster where, before we had Flock, it was difficult to be able to track any of these people down. So again, you just read license plates. A lot of communities have asked for some of these cameras to be in their community. I know we're working with staff to look at how it potentially fund those cameras. There's a price to each camera. But we are looking at programs to expand how many cameras we have, especially the communities that are asking for them. So again, great tool. With that, the next presenter will updates from the Rubito Community Services District. I'd like to present General Manager Brian Losal.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor Barra Hoss, for having me here tonight. This is my first time here. I've been at Flavon Airport before, but first time kind of presenting in front of, you know, District Five. A little bit about myself before I get through some of the slides that I prepared for tonight. I've been the district just over four years now. When I first came to the district, I was the Director of Finance and Administration. I did that for a little over three and a half years. I was recently promoted to General Manager end of December for the Outbuilding General Manager. So happy to be here, excited about all the things happening at the district, or sorry, within the city. A lot that pertains to the district. So with that, I'm going to go through a few slides. So a little bit of history about the district for those of you who are not aware of Rubito. Rubito actually has the distinction of being California, California's first community services district formed in nineteen fifty-two. The district is comprised of approximately nine square miles of western Riverside County. It is established to provide water, sewer, trash, and fire protection services for relatively rural areas just west of the city of Riverside. Since the original formation about seventy years ago, services have been expanded to include street lighting and weed abatement. As of July one, two thousand and eleven, our CSD is now fully within the Incorporated Valley of the City of Rupa Valley. So we serve most of the eastern side of the city of Rupa Valley, and then J C S D, which is a sister agency, serves the west side of Rupa Valley. So here's kind of a district boundary map. These boundaries, you know, change over time, but in essence, this is kind of what the district boundary map looks like. So on the north end of the district, we kind of go up to the top of Riverside County, border San Bernardino County, the sixty freeway, cuts through the middle, and then on the south side, we run along the river and then through Limonite. We are governed by a five-member Board of Directors who are elected at large. Each board member serves a five-year term. Our current board president, who's in the audience tonight, is President Rick Rupi. And then our vice president is currently John Skirbels. A little bit of the district profile for those of you who are unfamiliar with Rubito. Serving the eastern side of Rupa Valley, that's about thirty-seven thousand population. We have different level of water, sewer, and trash accounts. We have about sixty-seven hundred water connections, and then eighty-six hundred sewer accounts and seventy-nine hundred trash accounts. To put it into perspective, on the water side, the district produces about sixty-eight hundred acre feet per year of water. One acre feet, one acre foot is about three hundred and twenty-six thousand gallons. On the sewer side, the district collects about one point seven million gallons per day and sends the sewer to the city of Riverside who operates a treatment plant to treat the sewer and release it into the Santa Ana River. And then trash, we generate about sixteen thousand tons of trash a year. Our trash provider is Burt Tech. I'm sure you've seen their trash trucks rolling up. As Chief Otterman had mentioned, we do own and operate Fire Station Thirty-Eight with Cal Fire. And as you mentioned, that's a very busy station. I think on average, we're running about three hundred calls a month. And then street lighting, the district funds street lighting through property taxes. A financial profile of the district, we're not a very large staff. We're only about twenty-six full-time equivalent employees, and we have two part-timers. Overall, the budget, about thirty point seven million dollars. And then as far as kind of revenue sources, most of it is rate-driven. We have some development capacity fees and then property taxes. There is a snapshot of a typical bill where a customer might see. Obviously, it depends, depending upon the water usage and the level of service on your trash. But a typical customer bill who has a typical meter size, which is a three-quarters inch meter, using nineteen units of water, one unit of water, seven hundred and forty-eight gallons, will see a bill a month will go just under a hundred and thirty-seven dollars. A little bit about the supply and the facilities. So currently, Rubito is one hundred percent groundwater reliant. So what that means is we don't really have connection points elsewhere in the district to provide a redundant source of water. We rely on the water beneath our feet that we pump with the six potable wells. We have four reservoirs that you see kind of situated up in the hills, a couple booster stations, and we have two main treatment plants, one being the Leland Thompson Treatment Plant, which is on Thirty-Fourth Street, kind of on the corner of Thirty-Fourth and Crestmore. And then we have our second treatment plant, Anita B Smith, which is on the north side of the sixty freeway. We also have a well two facility, which is, is a smaller type treatment plant that actually sits in the parking lot of the current administration building. Wastewater facilities, the district owns capacity rights with the city of Riverside for three million gallons per day. We use about sixty percent of that. Our discharge bubble is about one point seven million gallons per day. Obviously, that would tick upwards as new development comes into the city. And then as far as our sewer system, we have a number of different waste stations situated throughout the district to collect the sewer and send it to the city of Riverside for treatment. Fire protection, again, we own and operate Fire Station Thirty-Eight. The below picture is actually a picture from, I think, when it was originally constructed back in two thousand and six. And then additionally, there's a picture on the right, we recently had the station sign replaced at the corner of Mission Avenue. Our contract with Cal Fire obviously fluctuates year to year, but right now it's about three point seven million dollars, and that is funded through property taxes. Currently, the district, currently our contract with Cal Fire, we fund about eight point two seven FTEs, fire personnel that man the station. I wanted to provide some drought update. Obviously, there was significant rainfall January through March of this year. I provided, I provided a couple of snapshots of some of the large reservoirs in the state of California. So they're all, or five out of six are over a hundred percent of their civil fabric, which is great, something that the state of California desperately needed. And then the image on the right is the snowpack level, the north, central, and south kind of snapshot. So again, we're not completely out of the drought yet, but in a short five-month period, what we used to see as exceptional and extreme drought conditions have alleviated. Obviously, that's subject to change year over year depending on rainy years. Some of the customer updates, the Consumer Confidence Report, something that we do annually, that's getting close to being finalized, and you should see that in your bills, I want to say, in June or July. Food waste recycling program, that's kind of a new mandate coming down from the state. You should be getting bill steppers in that. In essence, what it is, is you're going to start collecting or separating your food waste and putting it in your green waste barrel as opposed to just your normal trash. Customer billing assistance, as always, the district strives to help customers out that need billing assistance. And we do have a senior program called the Lifeline Program. And there's a litany of other customer assistance programs that have come on since COVID. If you want any more information about those particular programs or if they apply to you, you can call our district office, and we'd be happy to help you out. And then there's other payment arrangements or customer assistance as a product of SB nine nine A, which is the Water Shut-off Protection Act from a few years back. So if you're unable to pay your bill, we are happy to work with customers and offer a payment arrangement. Some of the projects kind of going on in the district, and I know the city kind of touched upon some of their projects that obviously overlap with us because they need to be provided water and sewer service. But one that's specific to the district is we're actually in the process of moving administration buildings. So right now, we've been operating out of an administration, which is administration building, which is the old fire station off of Rupa Boulevard, that has served as our administration building for decades. And last year, we went ahead and bought the old county, I think, Family Services Building on Mission Boulevard. The thought there is we are going to rehab that and make it the new administration building for the district. I've put a couple of images on the slides. Those are just a couple of renderings of what the building could potentially look like when it's all said and done. The south elevation would be if you're standing on Mission, the Mission Boulevard or the sidewalk, looking into the building. And the west elevation would be thousand-yard entry point to the building coming in from the parking lot. So that is just about done as far as the design and spec work goes. The next stage of that particular project will be a bidding phase that will last about six weeks. And ideally, we hope to have a contract awarded end of June, beginning of July. Estimated timeline on that will be about eight to ten months, so we're hoping maybe this time next year, we will be in the new administration building. There will be a significant outreach for customers too, so they're well aware of when we're making that transition so they don't try to show up for thirty-five ninety if they are trying to pay their bill. And then lastly, a couple of other efforts. I know I talked about this earlier in the presentation, the district is one hundred percent reliant on groundwater. You know, that's great, there's, the groundwater basin underneath us has plenty of water, but we need redundant sources of water. So one of those options is getting an intertie with our neighbors in North, the West Valley. So district staff is working, there's other parties at play, but district staff is working to secure that. And lastly, similar to the city, we are also going under kind of like a strategic communication audit in eventual. And lastly, similar to the city, we are also going under kind of like a strategic communication audit and eventual plan. We do need support and participation from members of the public. If you would participate in a quick two-minute survey, you can find that on our website. I also have some flyers too, if you're interested. So that's one way to participate. Please, it helps us kind of formulate a plan that will best serve the District and ultimately the customers. And then additionally, we are having a town hall similar, similar to this, but virtually for those who really want to spend thirty, thirty minutes an hour to help craft our plan. So if you're interested in any one of those, you can find more information on our website. And with that, that's all I got. Thank you.
So again, another great example of a question that I get asked often is, besides schools, space in schools and enrollment numbers, how are we gonna get the water? Rubido just, can you share, just share, again, every project they analyze as well, and they can confirm or not. And then we have to find other sources, but so far, the groundwater suffices. And I think you had to check like twenty years out, if I recall, when I was on the board of the Water District. So it's, it's a very tedious process to analyze how much water supply you have. And obviously, the directors that are here from that board also know, every year they find a way to detect new substances that have to be cleaned out. And that kind of affects rates and costs and everything else, but it's the right thing to do. But just wanted to share that each agency, as you've seen so far, doesn't announce on all these projects, can it support it? If not, what can they do to support it, et cetera? So with that, our next presentation is updates from Hoopa Area Recreation and Park District. General, uh, General Manager Colby DeWitt.
Alright, good evening. Thank you guys for having me. This is Mayor Barajas and I am the General Manager for Hoopa Area Recreation and Park District. Thank you all for, for being here tonight. Go through as quickly as possible for you, but we have a lot of exciting updates I want to share here. The first one here is something we've been working on for a long time. Thirty-seventh Street, just east of Wallace, the District has acquired about three-quarters of acre piece of property to build a park on. I can see highlighted here in the top slide in pink. Not complete yet. We're still waiting for the actual approval from Riverside County. This has been about an eighteen-month process we've been into. So we're excited for that. The parcel along Mission Boulevard do most likely not develop with the hopes of retail coming in as part of the Mission core or plan there. But we're excited for this to bring a park into an area that, that is definitely underserved. We'll be applying for grant funds for the construction of the facility. And we'll be seeking public input for what amenities actually go into this facility. Something else, the Cat Merritt Dog Park, this is a facility, the only park in the city of Hoopa Valley not owned by the Parks District. It's actually owned and maintained by the city of Hoopa Valley. But they have approached us about a partnership or acquiring it to take over the operation and maintenance of that facility. I have problems maintaining a street. The city doesn't necessarily maintain parks on a regular basis. So it's kind of a logical progression here. And the Board's excited about the potential of this acquisition. Veterans Memorial Park is the oldest park in the District. It was built in the nineteen fifties, originally built by the West Memorial Park District, which is what morphed into the Hoopa Recreation Park District when we were formed in nineteen eighty-four. That park is, is old. There is still galv- you guys are leaving already? Come on, it's the one stuff. We literally still have galvanized pipe in the ground, running some of the irrigation out there. That's, that's how old some of the stuff is. We are planning a major renovation of that facility. As all the agencies have talked about tonight, the development going on here within the city. All those residential homes, commercial, industrial warehouses pay park fee to the Parks District. And all that money goes through the new park construction or renovation of existing facilities. The District has earmarked about four and a half million dollars towards renovation of Veterans Memorial Park, which will include all-new irrigation, hopefully removal of that, I wanna call it a, a snack bar, and restroom facility, bring it to some modern standards, new ball fields, new lighting. So we're excited for that. And this is all contingent on the new development coming in over the next couple of years here. Avalon Park is the next oldest park in the District, and it too is slated for complete renovation. With all the new homes coming north of the sixty freeway there, through Emerald Bridge, north and south. And then also the development of the Agua Mansa Commerce Park, there's about five and a half million dollars that will go into the renovation of, of that facility. So we're really excited about that. I see you all looking at the parks, the pictures here of Shadow Rock. Shadow Rock is our newest park that, that the, the District just opened back in February. This is part of the Shadow Rock development north of the sixty freeway there. We're really excited about this. This is our largest playground to date. The park itself is about nine acres. You can see the two ball fields there. Off in the distance, there is a dog park there. That's the District's first dog park. But that playground has our first zip line. It is the busiest park we have by, by far. If, if you live in the area and haven't been there yet, I'm sure you've heard about it. On a given weekday, there's fifty, sixty, seventy-five people in the park. On a Saturday, consistently seventy-five to a hundred at any given time in that park, walking, using the dog park, playing on the ball fields, using the playground there. We're extremely excited for this park. There's also two other parks in the, in the development, Adventure and Discovery. They're smaller neighborhood parks. Equally used as well, but you know, we're really excited for this facility. It's also our first ball field with LED lighting. So it's a cost savings to the District, extremely efficient. And most likely will be light in the second field as well going down, going down the, the road here. You've heard a lot of talk about Rio Vista, which is just north of the Shadow Rock facility. There'll be another six or seven parks within that development as well, about eighteen acres of parkland total. So we're excited for that. It'll tie in with this park system as well. The trail system will all interact within the communities. I'm trying to get through this stuff here. I don't want to unpour you guys too much, but we can talk at length about it afterwards. The other exciting part of Shadow Rock is there's a thirty-five acre open space attached to it, which is a big rock wall you all, you all seen. Something unique the District is working with, a nationwide nonprofit called the Access Fund. Their sole purpose is to maintain access to open spaces like this for, for rock climbing. That is an active rock climbing facility. There are two books actually written about it. There's three hundred documented routes along that wall. You'll never see me out there. Watching, yes, but not climbing. If you ever get the opportunity to go out there on a weekend and just sit there and all, it's pretty amazing. One of the downfalls of the facility, for some reason, people think it's fun to jump off the top of that with a parachute. Not very safe. There was a fatality there about three years ago before construction started. And since even the park's been constructed, we've had two incidents of people jumping where their shoes did not open completely and they, we actually have video of them bouncing down the wall. Our friends from the Friday Park had to go take care of them. So we're working with the City to come up with anti-base jumping ordinance right now and hopefully squash that. But for some reason, that is a known facility nationwide for base jumping. Have no idea why. The last gentleman had an incident that was there from Colorado, so. Well, I mean, never, never understood why. I think that's the end of it. A couple of things I want to touch base on, we referred to the, the park fees that are coming in for the development. That's what's funding all these new facilities. That's funding all these new expansions that we have here. We currently have thirty-eight facilities. With all the stuff they talked about tonight, as well as some other stuff on the west end of the District, we're gonna be over fifty-five parks with all this new development coming in. We specifically met with the operators today of the shops at, I'm sorry, the District of Hoopa Valley. And we had some concerns with their plan, and they've increased another three acres of parkland within that facility alone. So we're excited to see that. So that, that's where we're at. I'll be available for tonight. If you have any questions. Otherwise, thank you for having us tonight, and thank you, Mayor Barajas.
Thank you, Colby. So with that, given time, and I want to give you guys time, and I'll, I'll be here as long as you need me to. There was a few questions that were asked on the cards, so I'm gonna answer those and then we'll bring it up to a roundtable. And I'll be here again as long as you need me to, to answer any questions you have in person. But there are, the first question was, are there any updates on the proposed shopping center on Sierra and Armstrong? I think that we did provide a little bit of that. The groundbreaking is going to happen soon. Once we have that date, you know, you'll see us all. We all love that gold shovel and the hard hats. Everyone loves that picture, right? I just wanted to see it start construction. So it is, as you guys know, Tractor Supply, a coffee shop, and some restaurant. Hopefully I can get Chick-fil-A now and cross my fingers. The other one is, will there be more sheriffs patrolling Shadow Rock? We have had major thefts, including Grand Theft Auto. So the Flock system, we invested in that a year, even a half year. It was a long process to get that through the various legal processes and working with, with our partners at Sheriff's Department. That is to aid in tracking these down faster. The other thing is, to be, to kind of show us information, the current sheriff's contract is twenty-two million dollars a year. If you look at the overall revenue we get from property taxes for the whole city, it's eight million dollars a year. Property taxes alone can't, does not fund our Sheriff's Department. So what are we doing? Again, we do everything we talked about tonight, about bringing in more retail, more revenue generating entities. That is also eventually will help to continue to expand our fire, our fire department and our police and our deputies. We talked about, a little bit on CalFire about the Public Safety CFP with these three proposed projects. It would not only impact these three proposed projects, it would be any future project against a public safety CFD. Our goal is to get to one point two deputies per thousand residents. That's kind of like the optimal level for most, or above optimal level for most cities. That's what we're trying to get to. Compared to other cities, we're not in a bad spot, but we, we want more, right? We want more protection for you guys. We want more patrolling. We want more traffic control, et cetera, et cetera. We need to find funding sources for that. So there are a couple of different ways that we're, we're kind of attacking it. We also have currently a study to, we did a first one to see what it would cost to have our own police station. The cost of that was astronomical. We'd have to raise later taxes. We know how those, we know, we know how those go, those businesses go. So what we're trying to do is, our deputies have a very important job to do. You know, crime prevention, our SAMP teams do wonderful jobs, all that stuff. So we're trying to find a hybrid model, and we've been doing this study for a year now, where we find other sources or staffing, maybe even city staffing, that can handle quality of life issues. Quality of life is important to us, right? Whether it's noise ordinances, or parties, or maybe even a traffic incident, or graffiti, et cetera, et cetera. An unsheltered person having an encampment on the sidewalk, we don't necessarily need a deputy to go to those. And that's, that's part of the discussion and negotiation we're working on in our Sheriff's Department. It can be a deputy sheriff's staff person, but we don't necessarily need a deputy there. So what can, costing is coming due to not only improve the service, like patrolling, but also quality of life issues that are very important to our residents and get many more quality of life calls than not. The other question, what are, we are new residents of Hoopa Valley, the Shadow Rock community. How do we get more involved in our community? And the next question is kind of similar, where are volunteers needed most? We have a couple of nonprofit service clubs. For those that have never heard, it's the Hoopa Lions Club. We have about seventy members. At some point, you always get all them active. We have a good, a good amount that do different kinds of projects. I, myself, in the line, past president. If you want to come help, we do a lot of service projects. We also have a Rotary Club. And then we all have youth sports, right? So anything you want to help with youth sports, they're all, they're almost all volunteers, whether it's AYSO, Little League, Pony, Steelers, all that stuff. It's all volunteer led. If you just want to help with the community, the Lions Club and the Rotarians are probably the best options. And you can contact me and I'll show you, I'll let you know when the next meetings are. We'd love to have you join us. So with that, we will adjourn the town hall. And please stick around and talk to the various tables or, or talk to me. Thank you for coming. For those watching, thank you. We hope to give you info and information.